Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that this meeting is a
[inaudible 00:01:16]
where some of us are on WebEx, some will be on the phone and some in person. For those who have dialed in on the phone line, if you want to speak, you can raise your hand by clicking the number three key. When called on, you will click the number six key to unmute yourself. And now Attorney Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice a public hearing. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 2 o'clock PM on the 11th day of March 2021, Legislative Chambers, 4th floor, Oswego County Office Building, 46 East Bridge Street, Oswego, New York, or virtually, and I'll dispense with the web address and phone number. At which time, all persons desiring to express their view may be heard in the matter of the consideration of request for landowner inclusion within the existing certified agricultural district pursuant to New York State Ag and Markets Law, Section 303B, as amended. In accordance with New York State Ag and Markets Law, the following applications were received during the established annual window of January 1 through January 31, and were reviewed and recommended for inclusion by the Farmland Protection Board. There are 19 parcels. I will dispense with the tax map and the name and the acreage, but read the municipalities: Scruple, West Monroe, Scriba, Phoenix, Hastings, Orwell, New Haven, Hannibal, and Palermo. I order the Oswego County Legislature, February 11, 2021, Betsy Sherman Saunders Clerk. Any persons wishing to speak regarding the amendment to the ag district, please step forward and state your name first, and then we will go to the remote access persons.
Yes, thank you. At this time, there are no public speakers present in chambers, and I might add that I misdirected you. It's star three and then star six, and we'll give it a couple of minutes in case somebody wants to call in.
There being no persons wishing to be heard in the matter of the amendment to the ag district, Mr. Chairman, I'd request you declare the public hearing closed at 2:10 PM.
Thank you. I will now call the regular session in order, and I will defer to the county attorney to discuss today's meeting format. Meeting format is permitted by executive order and is both virtual and in person. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Michael Yerden.
President.
Herbert Yerden.
President.
Edward Gilson.
Here.
David Holst.
Here.
Roy Rehill.
I'm here.
John Martino, marked excused. Bradley Trudell.
Here.
Paul House.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
Here.
Linda Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
President.
Patrick Twiss has been marked excused. Stephen Walpole.
Here.
Nathan Emmons.
Here.
Thomas Drum has been marked excused. Lori Magano.
Here.
Robert Wilmot.
Here.
Marie Shad.
Here.
Tim Stahl.
Here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
James Karasik.
Here.
Morris Sorbello.
Here.
Mark Greco.
Here.
Ralph Stacy Jr.
Here.
That's 22 present and three excused. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please lead us in invocation and the pledge?
As we come together today, let us be grateful for the opportunity to live in this great country and to serve our community, for the chance to make a difference in the lives of our loved ones and the citizens of Oswego County, for the gift of each day and the company of good and decent people, and for the examples of courage and dedication they live out each day. May we be inspired today and encouraged to travel life's path with confidence and conviction. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never taken justice for all.
Everyone has had a chance to review the minutes from the February meeting. Is there any corrections? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Mr. Wilber, are there any visitors? There are no visitors and no public speakers. Moving on to reports, are there any reports from county officials? Any reports from standing committees? Any reports from special committees? If you would indulge us just a moment, we're going to move now to a pre-recorded State of the County address. Good afternoon and welcome. I'd like to start my remarks today by asking you to join me in a moment of silence as we remember all those we have lost over the past year, a year certainly unlike any other that we have endured. Thank you. Exactly one year ago today, the World Health Organization declared that the COVID-19 virus had created a worldwide public health emergency. The very next day, I stood here before you to deliver this annual message, a message that is typically the chairman's assessment of where we are as a county and as a community. Historically, the chairman would bore the daylights out of most of you with the reports of progress over the previous year, and then try desperately to inspire you with hopeful expectations of the good things to come in the current business year. But last year was not your typical year. Instead, I opened my remarks with a reference to something that very few knew anything about: the coronavirus. At that time, only six days had passed since the governor issued an executive order declaring a statewide health emergency. None of us knew what to expect next, and I urge you all to be calm and vigilant in your efforts to take preventative measures and to avoid exposing yourself or others to the virus, a message that I have continued to share with you each and every week since. I close that short opening paragraph before moving on to the usual reporting of county government activities by asking you to do your part and to follow the advice of medical professionals, and I assured you at that time that if we did, we would all come through this with minimal impact to our lives and our communities. As it turned out, that was not one of my more prophetic moments. We all know what happened next, so I won't burden you with a play-by-play recap of a year that most of us would like to forget. I would, however, like to remind you of what I think was the most important development to come out of this life-altering event. When I think back about all that has occurred since I stood here last to address you, I am reminded of the words of Vince Lombardi when he said, "The price of success is hard work, dedication to the job at hand, and the determination that whether we win or lose, we have applied the best of ourselves to the task at hand." As I stand here today, there is no question in my mind that we embodied Coach Lombardi's thoughts. As a county and as a community, we came together, determined to do our best, and in some cases even beyond. From every corner of our thousand square miles, friends, neighbors, and strangers, young and old, rich and poor, people we had never even met before stepped up to help those in need. Businesses, large and small, reorganized, retooled, and chipped in to find solutions not just for local needs, but in some cases to meet the pressing worldwide demands that continue to grow under a once-in-a-century public health crisis. I encourage each of you to remember the year 2020, not as a year when schools and businesses were suddenly closed with no real plan as to what would come next, or the year when your prom, your sports season, your wedding, or any of the other hundreds of other things that we have always taken for granted as everyday life were no longer an option for you. Instead, as hard as it may be, I challenge you to remember 2020 as the year when your neighbors, men, women, and in some cases, children, cooked for people they didn't even know, when they sewed masks and other protective clothing for our doctors, nurses, and first responders, who day by day, at their own peril, stood on the front lines doing whatever was needed to be done to serve and to protect the rest of us from the scourge that was upon us. Remember it as the year when we came together as a community while under orders to individually stay apart. Remember it as the year when in reality, in your soul, in your heart, the things you gained outweighed the things you missed. The pandemic has brought us closer. Neighbors, friends, and families built, strengthened, and renewed relationships as frustration and uncertainty threatened to leave us despondent. While our students, our parents, our business community, and others continue to struggle with the changes and challenges we have faced, we now find ourselves facing them together, supporting each other in ways like never before. As awful it has been, in many ways, we are better now than we were before, and we should recognize that as we continue to work together to rebuild and reignite our local economy. There is much to do in this new year, and we must remain vigilant in our efforts to protect ourselves and those around us, but at the same time, we must work harder than ever to ensure that the needs of our residents are met to the best of our abilities. Local government services will continue, our efforts to find state and federal money for priority projects will intensify, and our partnerships with other governments will grow as we seek to solve the issues before us. Water and wastewater concerns continue to torment us, as does the ever-growing need to address the lack of adequate broadband services throughout the county. Broadband issue is particularly troubling for us as it limits access between students and teachers, doctors and patients, employers and remote staff, and in general, the greater public and the growing reliance on online services of every sort. We currently have a very in-depth study underway with our partners at the Central New York Regional Planning and Development Board that will help us better identify the need for these improvements and hopefully make us more competitive for the funds to address it. There is a growing trend for governments to address this issue as they come to the realization that the private sector providers will not. Also trending, not just here, but throughout the country, is the movement for reform in the law enforcement community. I am pleased to say that Oswego County has been in the forefront of this effort. Continuous improvement is the foundation upon which the sheriff and his team base their day-to-day policy decisions and operating procedures, and I appreciate that we have a legislature that supports an aggressive agenda to help modernize our sheriff's department as they continue to work harder to protect our residents and employees. We are also encouraged that the federal government has recognized that the COVID pandemic put a serious financial strain on local governments, and we are hopeful that the recently announced stimulus funds will help solve those financial pressures while also allowing us to work with our respective local governments to better prepare for future environmental or economic emergencies. Now is the time to focus on strengthening and diversifying our business community through strategic investments and critical infrastructure that will subsequently inspire growth throughout the county. 2021 will undoubtedly be a better year than 2020, how could it not be? We still have challenges before us, but I have no doubt that we will continue to recognize that we are all in this together. A phrase echoed throughout the last 12 months, a phrase that still rings true and one that inspires a sense of unity, teamwork, and collaboration. To close, I would like to take about five more minutes of your time to play four short videos for you, videos we produced with our partners last year to jog the memories of our residents and remind them about what really makes Oswego County special. There's four key elements: our strength of community, our determination to never give up, our natural inclination to work together, and our demonstrated ability to succeed.
Oswego County has a long history of strength and heart. Over 200 years of perseverance, passion, and pride. A county and community built around its people. Whether it was the front lines of early military campaigns or the front lines of today's health crisis, our resolve has been built as one. A strength of character that has shaped us and made us who we are. Soldiers, farmers, entrepreneurs, a heart that shows our true nature and makes us whole. Parents, teachers, healthcare professionals, frontline workers, and first responders. That's Oswego County. Together, we are courageous. Together, we are compassionate. And together, we will rise above this challenge and celebrate a brighter tomorrow. Our future is bright and expectations great. Since 1816, Oswego County has been built upon a foundation of hope and success, a framework that shaped us then and defines us now. Our communities, our families, our schools, our businesses, we strive for better, always. As we confront and conquer challenges today, we become more confident for tomorrow. Our ability to grow and adapt will surely help us flourish in whatever new normal comes our way. The light of our unity will never be diminished. We believe in the strength and the heart of our people. We know that through determination and persistence, anything is possible. And we trust that working together will not only achieve our goals, but help us always persevere. That's Oswego County. Together, we are strong. Together, we are united. And together, we will rise above this challenge and celebrate a brighter tomorrow. We are in this together. Words that we have heard often throughout these unsettling times: a sense of unity, teamwork, and collaboration, words that Oswego County has embraced throughout its history. From our early days of settlement and governance to today's fight to protect it, we have always come together as a community. Local companies repurposing or ramping up production lines, and volunteers joining forces to meet the needs of critical supplies. Together, we confront crises and support each other, while virtual bonding and social distancing activities raise community spirit. That's Oswego County. Together, we are one. Together, we can accomplish anything. And together, we will rise above this challenge and celebrate a brighter tomorrow. We will persevere. It's who we are as a community and who we are as a people. Oswego County has seen the battlefronts, sheltered the innocent, and met challenge after challenge with resilience. Our history has shaped our fortitude, and our strength has helped us overcome. Today's crisis may be unsettling, but our perseverance over hardship will surely triumph. As we have done before, we will do so again. A community built on unwavering spirit and a motivation that will always help us prevail, this tool of confidence will forever be at the root of any solution to any problem we may encounter. That's Oswego County. Together, we stand firm. Together, we are unshakable. And together, we will rise above this challenge and celebrate a brighter tomorrow.
Four words: strength, hope, collaboration, and perseverance. I think we saw them all demonstrated last year, and I hope that we will all continue to be motivated by the greater sense of community that came from it. I look forward to working with all of you to come out of this situation even stronger than before and more focused on our efforts to make Oswego County an even greater place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you. God bless you all. God bless Oswego County, and God bless America. Okay, thank you for that support. Moving on to resolutions and motions. Government courts and consumer affairs legislator Holtz, there is none. Moving then to Public Safety Committee legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to move resolutions PS 1 through PS 5 as a block as a consent.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Moving then to Human Services Committee legislator Trudell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolutions to be moved as a block, resolutions 1 through 5.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract, RFP 20-DSS-004, Case Management Services.
Mr. Chairman, in the package, there is the information, of course, on this, but I just would like to stress, this is a five-year contract. It was, there's a three-year review period on this, and there's also a one-year cancel contract on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? This is a legislator. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay, and state your name. Thank you. Legislator Trudell.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution declining grant award underemployment/unemployment worker training Department of Employment and Training, New York State Grants Gateway, contract number C19437GG.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution declines funds that are offered for training. However, these same funds could be available potentially through the WIIO, WIIOA, pardon me, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act. So an opportunity for us to grab these funds would be perhaps inopportune at this time. And because they are available, again, you know, we do want a trained workforce, we do want to have individuals with opportunities that might otherwise be available to become trained, to have those funds available. But again, it's available through the WIIOA, which is the federal agency.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Let's legislate or shot.
I have very bad audio. I couldn't even hear the presentation. I don't know why, but I had a nice talk with Stacy, and she was very helpful regarding this. But this is important, I believe. We are desperate for nursing upgrades, and I made quite a few phone calls, and it seems to me, after all of the money in the past years that's been squandered on programs that really concern me, this type of thing has the teeth we need for future taxpayer careers. And I understand we're saying, oh, you know, if we put the money up as a county, we're betting against every single person who enters this program to fail. I mean, I understand you might have one or two dropouts, but people I spoke to said, oh, training is key here. I'm not aware of this WIIOA funding and how easy it is to access. But does this have to be decided today? Can the state, does anybody call the state? Can you hear me?
I think, legislator shot, perhaps I could answer that at least partially, and that is, I'm at 100% your agreement with you that we do need to train people, we do have shortages of nurses, et cetera. However, the rates at which we put the people through, it hasn't achieved the stipulations per what's brought forth by the state in order to get these monies. So recently, there's a class that should have begun at City Voces, I believe it was this week, and they didn't have enough enrollment for that. So this particular funding would make us liable if there were individuals that dropped out of the program.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment again?
Yes, legislator shot.
Thank you, Bradley, about that. But nobody's answering my question. Did anybody contact the state? And does every healthcare facility in this area have a letter outlining what is available? I have really bad audio, just so you know.
Yes, the department has been in contact with the state the past several weeks or months, trying to work out amendments to the state's requirements on this program, and the state has not agreed to make those amendments that would make this program work for us, one of which is their deadline for completing this occurs prior to the end of the coursework that the candidates would have to go through. So that further increases the chance that people, not enough people, will be able to complete the course.
Right.
Yes, this has been, this has been bantered back and forth between our folks and the state for quite a while.
And the state is rigid and won't bend in any way for this employment opportunity?
Right.
Have we got that writing from the state?
I don't have that in front of me, but I'm sure that a lot of those discussions occurred by email back and forth between DSS and the state. We could have those reviewed.
Is it critical that this be ended today at this meeting? I'm willing to drive to Albany over it. That's how much I think how important it is.
Thank you. Perhaps if Commissioner Alvert is on the line, could she phone in?
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Little.
Alrighty, so, yes, we've had discussions. We do have things in writing from New York State Department of Labor. I do want to reassure folks that if there are any citizenry in Oswego County that desire a healthcare industry career, we are ready, willing, and able to remove any financial barriers for them with really three different existing funding streams, none of which create any kind of potential liability for us having to back up county money because of the state's not being flexible. This was given to us two years after we wrote it. It was much less than half of what we had initially asked for, and the bulk of our proposal was really focusing in on existing partners for the healthcare industry, specifically St. Luke's, Morningstar, and Oswego Health. St. Luke's, Morningstar, and Oswego Health. So this would have upgraded shining stars, if you will, in our healthcare industry by giving them paycheck, a paycheck protection, so that when they were in school, they were still able to support their families. We will have other opportunities, but I want to assure everyone that we are not missing a beat when it comes to removing any kind of financial barrier to people succeeding in attaining higher degrees in the healthcare field.
Could I chime in again, please?
Yes, legislature shot.
Stacy, thank you for all that work, because this is a really, I think, valuable piece. And I do want to remind everyone that in the past, I mean, we've all come through, we've spent a lot of money at the airport, we've spent a lot of money in places that I really question, but it seems like we're building a lot of low-income housing in Oswego. We're going in a direction of, we're going lower, we're not going higher. This particular thing takes us higher. And has an ad been put in the paper? Has anything been done to really spread the word on this?
Yes, absolutely. We have Facebook postings, Instagram, you know, ads in the paper. I'm not sure. I guess we have had some.
Well, underemployment, I mean, I don't know, wherever anybody looks at this point.
Yeah, we really partner with our healthcare industry. When people are looking, they're going to be looking towards an actual job with, say, Oswego Health. And they're all, all of those folks we mentioned have a seat at the table with our Workforce Board, and that is hosted through SUNY Oswego.
Stacy, would your current programs that you mentioned, not this particular one, bridge paycheck gaps?
No, and neither will this one. You know, that's what we wrote it for. We were really hopeful. You know, certainly, we can provide more financial support for those folks through some existing entitlement programs, but you know, this was really providing the same paycheck from Oswego Health, the same paycheck from Morningstar. We were working hand in hand, as I said, with our employers in the healthcare industry to uplift people in their positions.
Oh, my, you know, I'm just concerned Oswego continues to rumble at the very bottom of these categories of employment, literacy, obesity, smoking, everything. We're like right there with a poster child. And I am urgent for people to be lifted with tools in the box. We need to try to direct and improve the ability. One individual taking a career on is a life changer. That's going to have an echoing effect out over many people. You know that, Stacy. And I'm just, I don't know, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around all these timelines. I understand. I'd love to call the state. Is there a cutoff date here that we get in trouble with?
We've pretty much missed the cutoff date. I mean, we could extend it out. I'm sure the state is willing, but they are not being flexible. I'm not sure if it's, you know, tight timelines because there was such a long delay. I mean, this was, as I said, this goes back to our planning stage was in 2018, and it was submitted in 2019. And here we are in 2021, and they want us to spend the money down too quickly. Our WIOA, our CARES Act money, the money that City has on the table for tuition assistance, as well as all the other tuition assistance programs that could be applied for. And our E and T folks at our care center hold people's hands right along the way to get them through all of that paperwork. And we do have a rather robust class of Oswego County citizenry in nursing degree programs right now. And Morningstar also, I believe it was Morningstar, one of our providers, though, they actually have helped their folks begin this without our paycheck protection money.
Okay, was there any other discussion? Legislature Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All great discussion that would have gladly been answered in committee, I'm sure. I'd yield the floor to the legislator re-hail.
Legislature re-hail.
Thank you. My video is not working. I just wanted to reiterate what Stacy said. I actually, she covered all the bases. If anybody who knows, any legislators want to contact any employers, if they have people that need training, there's a lot of funding. You know, we're trying to break down barriers with our Employment and Training Division all the time, but I, you know, there's a lot out there that we can do, and that doesn't put us on the hook in case, in this case, for potentially $147,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislature Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a notation on the record that my employer is directly involved with City Bosse's as far as health, dental, and medical training programs, and to avoid any conflict, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Please state your name.
Marie Shad.
Any other abstentions?
Legislature Greco abstains.
Legislature Greco also abstains. Greco and Stacy abstain.
Mr. Chairman, that's three excused, two abstained, one opposed, 19 in favor.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Moving on to economic development and planning by legislator Chesbrough.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Community Development, Tourism Planning, snowmobile trail grants.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an annual agreement that we have with 10 different snowmobile clubs in Oswego County, and it is no cost to the county. It is funded by the state.
Thank you. I would also note that it's a pass-through account, no expense to us. And because of a number of factors, there were 10,000 more snowmobiles registered this year than last year. So the program is a success.
Yes, great for our tourism and recreation.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? State your name. Thank you. Resolution passes. Resolution EP 2 by legislator Chesbrough.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the chairman to execute an authorized agreement with Operation Oswego County, Inc.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is basically a contract that we're doing with all of our authorized agencies, and it is a funding agreement, making things a little bit more transparent and increasing the communication between our agencies and the legislature.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? State your name. Thank you. Resolution passes. Resolution EP 3.
I was just going to say 22 in favor and 3.
Sorry, speeding. Resolution EP 3 by legislator Chesbrough.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution to amend the agricultural district plan boundaries by permitting additional areas of inclusion pursuant to agriculture and market law, Section 303B as amended.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an annual agreement that we have. It is a law that we can ask our landowners in January, any of them that would like to be placed in our agricultural district. This year, we had 19 different parcels from 12 different landowners, and we've always, and we've also had a public hearing about it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? State your name.
Mr. Chairman, that's 22 in favor and 3 excused.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Moving on to Health Committee now. Legislator Karasik.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I would like to present 81, 2, and 3 as a block for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a second? And multiple seconds? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on now to Infrastructure, Facilities, and Technology. Legislator Walpole.
Second.
Second. We have multiple seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Did you mean Resolution 3 also? Right, so to be clear, it's Resolutions 3 through 8, move to a special meeting on the 23rd at 7:00 PM. So we're clear. Thank you. Do you have a second? So the correct motion would be to table these to the special meeting on the 23rd. Okay, just to be clear, the motion was to table, or a second? Multiple seconds? All in favor? Thank you. You're welcome. Moving on now to Finance and Personnel, legislator Walpole. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution designating the Oswego County Treasurer as the responsible official to correct clerical errors and errors in essential fact under real property tax law 5556.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Please state your name.
Mr. Chairman, that's 22 in favor and 3 excused.
Thank you. Resolution passes. You're welcome. Moving on now to unfinished business. Is there any miscellaneous business? Legislature Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would request that you call for a special meeting to be March 23rd at 7 o'clock to take up those resolutions that have been tabled, along with the public hearing for the police reform plan that has already been scheduled as well.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Multiple seconds? All those in favor? Opposed? State your name. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there may be some other business added, which could be added to the call of the meeting, but it doesn't require a resolution.
Thank you. Legislature Karasik.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as I spoke to the legislative body before about our Health Department, I just want to make notation that the clinics that are being run at Fulton High School are very much a precision machine. It's amazing to watch this. The volunteers that show up, law enforcement that puts in time, county employees from other departments other than Health Department, they run people through. It is a process of about a half hour and 15 minutes of that is your wait time after you've received your vaccinations. And you realize that on the news, they talk about the 24-hour clinics, they talk about the massive clinics that are taking place in other locations, but we have one right here in our county that does a stellar job with a lot of people that show up every Saturday and make sure that our people in this county are being taken care of. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Legislature Karasik. And as we had discussed earlier, I would mention that on Good Morning America this morning, they featured Jones Beach, Long Island is doing 1,500 vaccinations a day. Our Health Department is also capable of that if we were to get the vaccine. Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Legislature Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for your diligence and great work that you did in the past year and which was brought forward in your State of the County address. Thank you for your leadership, and I know I speak for the whole legislature when I say that, and continue plugging forward for us. Thank you.
There being no more unfinished business, look for the appropriate motion. Stand adjourned.
There are no public speakers signed up in chambers.
All right, thank you, and thank you all for coming today.